Hi, good evening, everybody. So thank you so much for being here tonight and thank you for your patience. I'm sorry we're getting started a little late, but it's great to have you all here this evening. We'll go ahead now and begin the public hearing. So this public hearing is regarding the renewal of the cable television license of Comcast Cable Communications Management, LLC. The purpose of this proceeding is to continue to identify the future cable-related community needs and interests of Newburyport and to review the performance of the cable operator under its current license. So the current Comcast license was issued October 6th of 2015, and it runs through October 5th of 2025. So it's a 10-year license, and right now we're in the middle of what's essentially a three-year process to review that license and negotiate the terms for the next round. And again, it lasts for 10 years. This hearing is held in furtherance of the goals of the Federal Cable Act. There's a lot of federal regulations around this process, as well as state regulations that we're working with. So public notice of this hearing proceeding was published in accordance with applicable law and regulations. It's hereby entered into the record of this proceeding. So this evening, we do have Comcast Senior Manager of Government and Regulatory Affairs, Carrie Morris, who's here in person this evening. So appreciate her coming all the way here this evening. Welcome, it's Morris. And she's here to observe as this proceeding is part of the ascertainment process. As such, we won't be asking Ms. Morris to speak or address any questions, but you're welcome to take the mic at any time if there's anything that you'd like to speak about if the occasion arises. So, and thanks to Comcast for treating this process so seriously and being here tonight. It really does reflect the commitment of Comcast to the city and to NCM Hub, Community Media here in Newburyport. So the mayor had some comments that he wanted to make sure that he expressed this evening, and I'll begin with those. If he does come this evening, he can pick other comments to deliver. So I'm sure he'll be fine. But he really just wanted to emphasize that community media, local television, PEG access has never been more important, and its contributions really have never been more widely recognized than over the last few years with what we've gone through with COVID and the extent to which really our government had to go online for the last few years. You know, democracy, local democracy would have been greatly hindered if we had not had that same access through local television, community television, community media. And we've seen this in cities and towns across Massachusetts and definitely here, where there's a very strong local connection to what's going on in our government and our media and our businesses. So now, more than ever, it's the interest of municipalities to do their part to help these local access providers, such as Newburyport Community Media, to continue to provide that strong public, educational, and government access operations, training, and programming. So this programming helps support and grow the local economy and businesses in a wide range of institutions and groups, and it helps build this thriving arts, cultural, entertainment, sports, spiritual life that we have here in this community. So the public, educational, and government operations and programming, it helps connect us all. It helps connect residents, community groups, and businesses of the city to its government. It helps connect the city with its residents and community groups and businesses. It helps the public connect to community groups and organizations as well. And this is a time when longstanding news and media, ranging from local newspapers to local television news coverage, a lot of us disappearing. It's not as strong as it used to be. So we're depending on those local channels more than ever. So now's the time to work together. We want to preserve, grow, and expand with the city, its residents, community groups, and businesses, working together with Comcast, have built and accomplished, and continue to move ahead in a world and environment where video and telecommunications are such an integral part of many aspects of our lives. So I want to tell you a little bit about what the process looks like this evening. As I said, this is part of the continuing cable license renewal ascertainment process, where we're ascertaining the city's future cable-related community needs and interests. So the cable license renewal is a multi-year process. The city's been working extensively on this ascertainment period during that time. And we've had an initial meeting with Comcast, which went very well as an opening meeting. The parties after this hearing will meet again, and we'll have the goal of coming together for an agreement on the basic terms and conditions of a renewal license. And one of the most important parts of that renewal license is the amount to which the PEG, Public Educational and Government Access Funding, is funded at the next 10 years. So it's really important to hear from you tonight. You're all here this evening because you care about either this PEG funding and community media, or about the performance of Comcast and what you're looking for as we negotiate this cable license. We really want to hear from you. And this is one of those times when your voice really can and will make a difference. We have a representative from Comcast here tonight to be able to hear your thoughts and your comments, and this process only occurs every 10 years. So this really matters tonight, to have this conversation. So I want to give a moment to Sarah Hayden from NCM Hub to introduce a little bit more about NCM Hub and what they do, and she has some really fun videos to share as well. So I'm going to introduce Sarah, and please enjoy.
Hello, I'm Andrew Wolfe, Principal of Newburyport High School. And I just wanted to take a few moments just to acknowledge our partnership with Port Media. They've really been a great support for us at Newburyport High School over the years, especially during the pandemic, where they were able to take so many of our programs and make them public and more accessible for the community. And from that whole experience, a lot of that was able to transcend now kind of into our current days, just being available and helping us problem solve and coming up with programming, just so the community can be aware of what's happening at Newburyport High School, but alongside Newburyport High School, the whole entire public school system as well. So I just wanted to extend my thanks and appreciation for Port Media and just being a true partner over the years that I've been here. Thank you.
Hi, I'm attorney Ed Berkman, host of The Common Law here on the Newburyport Community Media Hub. I'm incredibly thankful for the opportunity this organization has given me. It has given me the opportunity to engage with my community and discuss everyday legal issues, which I feel like is so important for my community to understand. This has allowed me to engage with my community, and I have learned so many skills, not only communication skills in terms of presentation and engaging in front of the camera, but they have also taught me editing skills and other skills needed to produce a program such as The Common Law. If it weren't for the resources of this establishment or the dedicated employees that have been very patient with me in getting and obtaining these skills, I don't know where I'd be. I encourage every member of this community to reach out to them and to take advantage of the opportunities that are here for every citizen of Newburyport. Opportunities to learn really important skills in the communications industry. We are an ever-changing community, and technology is getting faster and faster, and especially communications technology is getting faster and faster. I mean, think about your daily intake of media. It's all video and audio based, and you're only using that more and more and more through YouTube and television and radio. And this place is really on the forefront of all of that, and it's an amazing place, and I would never want to see it go. So thank you to Sarah, thank you to Maeve, my producer, and thank you to everybody who works here. It's truly been a blessing for me. Thank you.
Okay, hi, my name is Sarah Hayden. I'm the Executive Director of NCM Hub, and I'm just going to read a little bit. Don't get afraid, because it's a few pages, it's big letters, just of my feeling about this organization and my, what I've been doing as a part of, well, actually for 31 years, but I'll tell you that in my story. Okay. "On Sunday, during another trip to my 10-by-10 storage unit, filled with boxes of letters, photographs, documents, articles, and journals, basically my family's history, I loaded another 10 large plastic bins, each holding five large four-inch binders, filled with what my father called 'daily notes.' Pausing for a moment as I pondered the enormity of my father's work, at least since his father passed away in 1985, I felt compelled to stop and look at one of those notebooks. I opened the bin closest to me and removed the top notebook. Upon opening it, I was quite surprised by what was printed on that page. Created on 6/30/97, Cablevision, Tuesday. N3 to Brewster Cablevision for a shoot of two shows of Greg O'Brien's Country News Journal. Each show has a single guest. Each guest is being interviewed about a book he has recently written." My father continued with more details about the production. "Out of 50 such binders filled with years of his daily notes, on this day in 1997, his Cablevision recollection was a reminder that together we have spent over 50 years not only producing programming for our local cable channel, but also sharing a devotion for keeping this important community resource alive. My interest in and my unwavering loyalty to public access television began with my father, Norman Adams. He literally led me into the work I have been doing for 31 years. I must take a moment to remember my father. During the last contract negotiation in 2014, we had many conversations about the Newburyport contract. Like me, my father was a passionate supporter of PEG access. He died suddenly at the end of 2014, and sitting in the pews at his memorial service were many of his community access friends. I moved to Newburyport in 1993. My father was already involved with Cablevision down on the Cape. I had no idea about public access television, which he was talking about during a phone conversation. I got off the phone and found to my delight that indeed Newburyport had a studio on Hale Street at the customer center for cable subscribers. I could not believe what an amazing resource this thing called public access television was for a community. I became a member and was trained in camera operations and started doing what my father had been doing, helping other community members get their shows on the air and their voices heard, including the voices of those that are underrepresented. I even made a show or two of my own. A lot has changed in the 31 years that I have been involved with community media, but one thing that remains the same is our need to be informed and connected. Our local programming keeps our Newburyport citizens informed, engaged, entertained, and even inspired. Over the years, our members and interns have produced hundreds of interesting programs, including an annual international film festival. Cable shows include interviews with authors, artists, musicians, entrepreneurs, lawyers, realtors, doctors, philosophers, teachers, poets, athletes, veterans, and leaders of all kinds from all walks of life, including those from our marginalized groups. Our staff and interns have captured countless city meetings, school meetings, veterans, and Memorial Day presentations, public hearings, high school graduations, mayoral updates, flag raisings, high school sports, Yankee homecoming parades, and more. They have provided shows on cooking, exercise, environmental and climate change issues, school music performances, historic marine lectures, maritime lectures, stories about Newburyport's history, and the people that have lived here, just to name a few. What has changed in public access television is the different options for consuming and sharing information. Many have dropped their cable subscriptions in exchange for individual streaming services, too many to name. However, there are many people in Newburyport who still prefer cable television, and for that, we are grateful. Currently, our funding relies on those cable subscribers. One of the best services Comcast offers is our local cable channels. I cannot imagine a community without this powerful and essential resource. In addition to media production training for community members, we offer summer production programs for young people, and throughout the year, we offer internship opportunities for students in the eighth grade through college. For summer job openings, we hire our interns first and enjoy seeing them through their college years, many pursuing careers in media arts. All interns are encouraged to learn all aspects of media production, and when they are hired for summer positions, they essentially run the studio. From designing and teaching the youth programs to producing their own shows, filming city and school meetings, community events, channel scheduling, troubleshooting audio and video production issues, and general upkeep, such as organizing the equipment, documenting and uploading, updating production procedures, and digital file management. We could not do what we do without our interns and college students. It is rewarding seeing a young person in a summer video production program when they are nine, 10, 11, or 12, then they return as an intern at 13, 14, 15, then hired in high school and go on to attend college for media arts. What an awesome benefit provided by public access television funded by the Comcast cable subscribers and Comcast themselves. Comcast provides capital funding for equipment upgrades, which are essential to keep our equipment current for our rapidly evolving technology and our rapidly evolving which are essential to keep our equipment current and our rapidly evolving technology state-of-the-art. We hope that Comcast appreciates the diverse programming delivered over their channels to their customers and continues to support our efforts with the money that is required to upgrade the equipment. In addition, we are aware of the impact of the franchise fee on their customers. However, we hope they agree that this fee is truly a worthwhile investment in Newburyport, one of the many communities that they serve. For about 43 years, public access television has been an essential service keeping our community engaged, informed, and connected. Together with an inspirational message sent by my father through his daily notes, let's do all that we can to keep this awesome resource called public access television alive. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Sarah. That's fantastic, and this really lives out the mission of what we're talking about when we talk about local access television. So at this point, as part of our mission tonight is to talk about what the city's needs are, and I think that will come out through some of your comments as well, I want to allow our city Finance Director, Ethan Manning, to talk a little bit about the capital plan as we see it for the technology and infrastructure that we need in order to keep all of us alive and to really make our public meetings truly accessible to the public. So Ethan, please.
Thank you, Andrew. So in addition to Sarah's incredible team of staff, volunteers, interns, all the members of the community that helped create this great content, it requires an incredible amount of technology and equipment to do this very important work for our community. So good evening, everyone. Like Andrew said, I'm Ethan Manning, the city's Finance Director. I'm here to highlight some of the capital needs that NCM Hub and the city have identified as being critically important to providing these services to you for the next 10 years and beyond. As part of the cable license renewal, we are asking for Comcast support in funding these essential upgrades that make up the current capital plan. PEG program plays a vital role in Newburyport by covering everything from local meetings, school events, and community programs that keep everyone informed, engaged, and just connected as a community. So here's a quick breakdown of the key investments for which we are requesting Comcast support. I won't go into too much detail, but just to kind of give you a flavor of what we've identified as potential needs. The first is networking and infrastructure upgrades. This includes network improvements, a 10-gigabyte network switch, a storage system, and all this totals a cost of approximately $40,000. The next item is a larger ticket item for broadcasting components across all city facilities, including the school district. So these upgrades will enhance broadcasting from locations such as the upper elementary and middle school, City Hall, including the council chambers, the auditorium, the mayor's conference room, this building, of course, the senior community center, and the high school. Those components, all in, total approximately $212,000. The next item are playback system updates. So really what this is, it's a two-phase upgrade in years one and five of the license to really upgrade and provide NCM Hub with the current technology to provide a playback system, which really automates the scheduling and broadcasting of recorded content to ensure smooth and reliable video delivery. And this is costing approximately $216,000 according to the city's estimates. And again, really what this does, it manages the channel's programming and ensures timely broadcast of city meetings, educational content, and all of the great community shows that Sarah's group has to offer. And then lastly, we are looking for Comcast support in making much-needed updates to the studio and portable equipment that's used by NCM Hub. Updating and replacing equipment in the NCM Hub studio along with enhancing portable broadcasting gear will cost approximately $190,000 according to our estimates. So all in, this capital plan, it's a big number, requires approximately $650,000 over the next 10 years for which we are asking Comcast support. While this is a significant investment that we realize, these are just such critically important upgrades to ensure that NCM Hub can continue delivering this great content that helps keep our community connected and really showcases everything that makes Newburyport so special. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ethan. We appreciate you putting that in context. So there's, you know, two parts of the contributions that we're really looking for. It's capital plan and then the annual allowances that help with the funding of NCM Hub, so their continual operations. So it's both capital and operations that we're looking for. So thank you for putting that number in context. I think it's extremely helpful. So you've heard from us, and the most important thing about tonight is being able to hear from you. So at this time, we will be opening the floor. Anyone who would like to speak this evening is welcome to come up and speak at this podium. We'll ask for you to give your name and address, just so we can have it for our public meeting records as we update Comcast and who is here this evening. So just give your name and address, and everyone is willing to, is welcome to speak. Just make sure that we're sharing the microphone, so I'd say no more than five minutes, but everyone is welcome to speak. I do want to make one note that there's three areas that do somewhat fall outside of the scope of what we can negotiate with Comcast. At the same time, everyone is encouraged to speak on whatever topic they'd like tonight. But what falls a little bit further from, you know, what we have control over is, first of all, the cable rates, so the rates that Comcast charges. And, you know, such comments are welcome, we just don't have that jurisdiction over it. The second is cable programming, outside of what's on the PEG access programming, which you've heard from us tonight, we do have overall oversight of that, or at least NCM Hub does. The city does not have the authority over the specific cable programming, so what's on TV, but I think you all know that. And then we are talking about the cable performance, we're not talking about internet and telephone service. What we negotiate with Comcast is on the cable license only. Again, all comments are welcome. Comcast is in the room, so you can speak about what you like, but that's really what we're trying to keep tonight, too. So with that said, we really are excited to hear from you this evening. If you hear somebody come up and talk about, you know, something that matters to them, you think, oh, that matters to me too, but they already said it, so I'm not going to say it. Tonight's the kind of night when you really can. We're encouraging everyone to speak to what matters to you, and don't worry about repeating anything that you've heard said. This is really a night when we want to hear your voices, and we're just so happy that you're here to be able to offer those voices. We have some Zoom participants as well, so once we hear from folks in the room, I'll make sure to take a look at Zoom and see if anyone wants to speak. We believe the technology should work, but if it doesn't, it's because it's in the capital plan, and we need the help for that. So, exactly, yep, exactly, that's what it is. It's the one night when that works. So if there's anybody who has family or other obligations and does need to be out of here sooner, I want to give you an opportunity to come up first. So with that said, the floor is open. Just please state your name and address first, and, you know, after we give a moment for anyone who might have obligations to attend to, please, just anyone is welcome to come on up. So thank you. Anyone want to come up first? Andy, please. Historical Commission Obligations, yes.
Thank you. Just because I'm a city official, I didn't want to step in front of anyone else who's a ravaged constituent, for instance. My name is Andy Port, I'm the Director of Playing and Development. Some of you may have actually seen me, some of you I know, at a lot of public meetings. We have, we got kind of a crash course when the pandemic happened, actually hosting online meetings with Zoom, and we've been using the Owls, which have been great. But we've also, one of the capital improvements that we talked about, as mentioned this evening, is really important to us. I'll just say, as a land use planner, I'm a community planner. Most of my day today was spent on a lot of different things related to land use and zoning and very dry topics, but ultimately speaking, everything that my office gets involved with, which is a very small department, but is responsible for a great deal managing or helping to deal with a great deal of what's going on in the city, it's all about community engagement. And so actually, the words that Sarah has said, actually, engaged, informed, and connected, those are actually the perfect words to describe, I think, the connection between what we try to do and everything that we're involved with and all of our boards and committees. And I think the really strong, important piece that I would reference is the connection to public meetings and understanding how your local government works, being able to engage in that, whether you're just getting informed about something or being able to speak up and say something. Those are extremely important things, and I think we saw, as planners, even just municipal planners, we saw a huge change since the pandemic, because a lot of planners were forced to, you know, go into this different realm, but we became sort of online hosts for very short, you know, small parameters. We certainly could not do as much as Sarah and her crew are doing, but that's extremely important to a community, and I think it's extremely important to what I, my staff, and all of our boards and committees, whether it becomes, you know, it goes to the city council, the planning board, other community preservation committee, et cetera. Historical Commission, there are so many boards in the city, and I think people being able to attend those meetings, see those meetings online if you can't get here. One thing I would say is, you know, there were some people who were saying, for instance, after the pandemic ended, well, we can just kind of phase that out, you know, like kind of the pandemic is gone. And irrespective of how it's actually accessed, whether it's through the cable or the online, I don't think that goes away. I actually think we, you know, we should see ourselves as, you know, we're now in a few new future age where people should be able to expect to see what's happening even at home, right? If you have, you know, you're disabled, you can't get out, you have kids you have to watch, you have an elderly person you need to, you know, take care of, you can't be out until 12:00 midnight, it's not unreasonable at all to be able to see what's happening, you know, in these meetings. And so I think being able to track what's happening there, being able to hear what's happening, I think is, it's a great to hear what's happening, I think, is, it's a great connection for a community to have. So I am definitely very strong in support of, you know, keeping, you know, that element in the community, but also expanding its ability, particularly the element of having built the built-in equipment, if you will, upgraded between all the important meeting spaces. So city council chamber, city hall auditorium, this, the two spaces I would prioritize myself are city council chamber and this space here, because they're the ones that, you know, we use very frequently. But city hall auditorium and the others, I think, are very important, important pieces, because when we're able to integrate with the cable, with the Zoom and so forth, all that stuff, it runs a lot smoother. And for instance, these folks won't have to do, set up our custodians and IT folks, you know, won't have to do all this setup every time they're doing it, because this space is used for other things. So having all that stuff built in saves a lot of staff time, too, for everybody. So it's a really good, important resource to invest in for the community. So thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kathleen Britton, and I'm President of the Board of Storm Surge here in Newburyport. And we exist to address the coastal issues wrought by climate change. And we do that through our speaker series, we do it with collaborations, we engage speakers, scientists, educators, activists, those who are quite knowledgeable about climate change and its effects on coastal cities. And it's all through science-based education and outreach. So we are extremely grateful that the city allows us to present our speaker series right here in this room. Our next one is next Thursday. And that we are able to record and post these meetings through the hub here. So, you know, we usually get a pretty good crowd, but being able to extend our outreach through this, through the cable channels is quite important to us, and we're very grateful for the opportunity to continue to present these, what we feel are critical meetings, not only for education, but also with calls to action. So being a coastal city, we feel like this is a pretty important service that we provide the greater Newburyport community. So again, we're very grateful. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jean Costello, 522 Merrimack Street. And I'd like to tell you about a civics project that I began about 18 months ago. It's called Government at a Glance, and it's been received really well in this community. Through a few mediums, I publish information about how our government works. I publish information about what's going on, and what I try to do is augment all the other communications that might be happening from the city or the newspaper. And folks really like getting concise, accurate information. Having recorded meetings is invaluable. So, you know, there's meetings going on four nights a week. None of us can be at all of them, but the ability to tune in and get them is fabulous. The other thing is that I'm fastidious about the information that I publish. As many of the department heads and councillors know, I tend to hound them sometimes. But when people speak, it's very important for me not to summarize what they say, but actually to be able to say, well, take a look yourself. And so I'm able to point directly with a timestamp to those things. We had a really big school committee appointment here six months ago, and I was able to point to all the candidate interviews, and that got a lot of uptake. Our mayor and sustainability manager did a wonderful video today when they're demonstrating what our new trash disposal system is going to be like. That'll be Monday's meeting, Monday's message. So that's cool. But there's other things that go on that people might not realize. I hear from a lot of citizens. They'll text me or they'll email me and say, you know, did you hear what they did last night? Or did you hear what the mayor said? And I'll be able to go up and look, and a lot of times, it's been a misunderstanding. So I'll be able to say, actually, this isn't what was going on. It was something else. Or people have done me the honor of saying, I was at a meeting last night, and I really didn't understand what happened. Can you explain it? And so all of that is made possible by having this information available. Lastly, I have analyzed one of our juiciest city council meetings and prepared, prepared education materials for high school juniors or seniors. Because, you know, sometimes when we teach civics, we teach about the guys in the white wigs that were in Philadelphia. And, you know, that's not how it works. Sometimes I'm looking at a city councillor and wondering if he feels that way. And so I'm speaking with a couple of educators in surrounding communities to say, you know, let's let students who are old enough to appreciate nuance, you know, see what actually goes on. So, you know, that's the information that I'm able to share back out through this wonderful resource. But I gotta tell you, I love my, I love my, you know, local access TV. One of my favorite shows is Morning Show with Mary Jacobson. It's a delightful just slice of life. She has an open and curious way of bringing people into my home that never would have been there. And it turns out that we met up at a friend's house. We were both invited. And I said, that's you? And she said to me, that's you? You're the gag person, right? Another one is Bruce Menon's Son of Second Takes. He's a film historian, and he sits down with films in the public domain, and he talks about the history, and then he lets you appreciate the film. I served on the Human Rights Commission with him. And when I discovered it, I'm like, man, who knew that you actually knew something about something, right? And so this content has helped me engage with people. It's brought me closer to other people. And as we think about what we had hoped the internet would be, right, when it burst on the scene 40 years ago, it's what I just talked about. It's engaging each other. It's lifting up all the creativity that we all have to share. And when I think about, you know, sometimes the content that comes streaming from some of the major producers, or when I think about the divisiveness that the internet has also enabled, community TV is the antidote.
Hi, everyone. I'm Melissa Cody, 304 High Street. I'm reading a letter that my son Colin sent to me. He was an intern with Sarah during his high school years and worked with the media hub following. So this is from Colin. My name is Colin Cody, and I spent seven years working with Sarah and the crew at NCM Hub throughout my middle school, high school, and early college years. I've always had a passion for media, and at this moment, I'm currently pursuing a career in the film and television industry. When I participated in a kids' video summer camp at Port Media back in 2013, I decided that I wanted to intern for the hub in order to gain some experience in the field of television broadcasting and production. This opportunity proved to be an immensely valuable experience for me, as I not only assisted with the tapings of high school sports and local parades, but I had also been tasked with directing several productions, working with various city officials, and ultimately circling around and leading a number of youth video camps during my time at Port Media. Because of these opportunities, I was able to bring a substantial amount of knowledge of media production and broadcasting with me as I embarked on my journey at Ithaca College, from which I am now a graduate, and eventually, when I made my move to Los Angeles, to continue pursuing my passion. The unique opportunities that myself and many other students and residents of Newport have experienced through working at the NCM Hub have only been possible via the continued support for local cable television and public digital media. As the industry continues to shift towards a hybrid television streaming landscape, the need for updated media production equipment and procedures has become vital in order for the hub to continue providing services, not just for city officials, but to each and every resident of Newport, whether it be through broadcasting essential government meetings on air or streaming live shows on the NCM Hub website and YouTube. And in addition, allowing middle schoolers, high schoolers, and fellow residents of Newport the opportunity to learn about and participate in the production and distribution of local media, both has and will continue to provide them with highly valuable skill sets that are applicable to not just careers in the media industry, but those in any industry that value leadership, teamwork, community building, and countless other notable qualities. I will be forever grateful to Sarah and the NCM Hub, and if the city's cable contract is renewed, I hope that future students and residents who are similarly passionate about media will be able to share the same experiences as myself, as well as the citizens of Newport, will be provided with critical education, entertainment in the best possible format, and the utmost quality in the near future. Thank you.
Evening, everyone. I'm Molly Edinburgh. The Sustainability Manager did a trash audit with the mayor today at his house. It was really fun. But, you know, what a chance to be able to show folks how things really work on the ground and with the mayor, so that that kind of thing is enabled through your programming, which is vital. I think everyone has said it very eloquently, especially Jean. I really liked the point that you made that local content and local community information is key, as we've seen with the hurricane and the issues that they're having in the south. That's what they are all stressing. Listen to the local officials, listen to the local community-based information and media, and that's where you're going to get the truth. And it's really vital. I worry here about not having the technology to keep up with what we need to do and how we need to get our information out. We have a lot going on, as Storm Surge said, with resiliency. We have a lot of projects going on. We have a lot going on in the environmental area, on energy, on waste. There's just a lot of changes happening, and it's really, really important that we are able to communicate that effectively. We've had several meetings over the last few months that have been technologically challenged, because as you can see with all these cords and all these things, it has, as Andy noted, every time we have a meeting here, we have to reset it up. So we really need that here and at city hall, at least. And I think you should be saying, instead of us saying, we want you here, you should be saying, we need to have you in our, Comcast needs us. I mean, Newport's a very engaged community. And with people switching over to streaming services, I think it's a very vital access point for everybody, both you and us. So thank you very much.
Good evening. Caleb Barlow, I'm a resident at 366 High Street. Frankly, I find this to be a bit of a frustrating conversation. We have a unique opportunity that hearkens back to the cable TV laws that were put together generations ago to drive new behavior. And although we're talking about community access programming, which is vitally important, the reality today is the production of content is simple, easy, and inexpensive, and all of it's moving to streaming. I mean, all you need nowadays is a cell phone and access to YouTube to produce very high-quality content. The focus that we need to have today is not on how we produce content or get equipment and what ultimately is a tax on Comcast. I mean, if you figure it, there's 7,500, roughly speaking, homes in Newburyport. Figure $200 a month, that's an $18 million contract. So we're hitting, we're sitting here talking about whether we get $300,000 a year or $600,000 a year out of Comcast. The reality is, that's maybe 1% to 3% out of that total revenue, that total addressable market that they get. What we need to focus on is the addressable market of the $18 million a year that's generated through various providers in providing cable or internet services. And the challenge we have today, and the focus, needs to be on key things like, what is the upload and download speed that we see in our community? What is the MPS score that we see from Comcast and other providers? Because it can tell you Comcast, from a customer satisfaction perspective, is the worst of the worst of the worst. And what we really need to be looking at is things like bandwidth shaping. How does the bandwidth come into our homes? What speed does it come in and what speed does it go out? Because what you'll find, if you ever noticed, you try to upload something big, like a video, the bandwidth shaping causes that bandwidth to drop dramatically down to a few megabits per second after a minute or two. These are the technology things that are really going to enable us over the next year. And trust me on this, over this 10-year contract, you're not going to care about the new camera, you're not going to care about the Owl Cam, because that's going to become more simple. What you're going to care about is the speed of the pipe that comes in and the support and the quality of that pipe. And the support and the quality of the pipe that we get from Comcast is beyond some par. It's ancient. I mean, literally on High Street today, now, this is more Verizon than Comcast, you see lead-coated copper lines hanging on these poles. Why are they still there? Where is the fiber? Where is the high speed? That's what we need to be focused on in this community. So what I would impart on all of you, as much as the content is important to your project, and your project, and your project, trust me on this, it doesn't matter. You will have the technology you need, because it will become simpler, it'll become faster, and it'll become super easy to use. What you need to care about is the bandwidth that comes in and the quality of that pipe. And right now, what you're sitting with is an old little copper pipe, where what we should be negotiating is a giant freeway. And until we focus on that, Comcast is going to take advantage of this community at every step that they get. So what I would impart on you is to kick them out the door. Get a new provider in here, where you need a new provider that gives you access to 30% or more of the total addressable market. That will change not only what you get in terms of the size of the pipe, but that new vendor is going to be willing to negotiate with you on what they need and what you need for your project, and what you need for your project, and what you need for your project. Kick them out. Thank you.
Evening. Jeff Cohen, 61st Street. Having been in the cable and telephone industry for 40 years and being one of the people who actually built the first cable system in Newport, I can say that what you just heard is a gross misrepresentation. Comcast's network, while it may be older than the Verizon FiOS that's being built right now, is capable of providing more bandwidth than 90% of the people will ever need and ever use. You don't have to replace all the copper in an outside plant, aerial or underground, with fiber optics, to get the data speeds that you need. Some of the challenges are that the average consumer doesn't know the technology, and maybe ought not to know the technology, but we have to be really careful. I don't work for Comcast. I'm retired. I don't work for Verizon, but I have done work for both of them. And I can tell you that no matter what town you live in, whoever the primary service provider is, whether it's Verizon, Comcast, Time Warner, Charter, Spectrum, you name it, the customers there are complaining about that provider, because the nature of running a network on telephone poles that are subject to storm and, you know, assault, like we have on Plum Island, it requires maintenance, it requires upkeep, and it's going to fail, just like your home PC fails, and time to recovery and things like that can always be improved. But the notion that you need to throw out the cable company who's made an investment in the existing plant, instead of working with them to improve the things you want to improve, I think that's not the direction that I certainly would recommend you go in. As a customer, it's not something I would want to see them go away. It's good to have choices. It's great to have competition. The reason Breeze Line isn't coming into Newport is because Verizon FiOS got there first. You would be hard-pressed to find another provider that's even interested in providing you video right now, because these providers aren't making money on video anymore like they used to. In fact, it's kind of a break-even proposition. They make their money on data and a little bit on phone. So if you throw out the existing cable company, you may not find anyone who wants to spend the money to build a brand-new plant, a brand-new head-end, fiber that connects to where their content is stored, you know, so that basically you can have what you already had. So, I mean, just if there's a way to get the proper people together to talk about the technology so that you can have give and take, and different people with different experience, maybe educate people on that, instead of... experience, maybe educate people on that, instead of reacting to throw them out, I would recommend that.[1286.42][1286.42][applause]
My name's Mike Morse. I'm the network administrator for Newport Public Schools, and I just figured this is some good timing with the positivity and negativity and different thoughts that, like, I've been a frustrated Comcast customer, and I, now working for the school system, see how important the local public access is. I've worked for Newport Public Schools since 2009. I started as a PC technician. I'd see Port Media coming in with their standard definition cameras and hooking up to the old coax, and the money that they have gotten from this contract has been used wisely in the past and will be used wisely in the future. During COVID, things like limited capacity in the stadium and the gymnasiums during sports events, sports events and graduation ceremonies that everyone's used to being able to attend, they immediately would come in, solve problems, and people would have it in their living room. My wife's family is a multi-generational Newport family. I grew up in Newport. We have tapes from public access that we've digitized, memories that we, you know, as much as I would love my upload speed on a Doxys connection to be higher, Comcast is, and all ISPs, they're trying to get you download speed because that's what customers need. If you, I have a great upload speed at my house, I have a nice internet connection. It doesn't matter if I have gigabit upload, I can't create the content that NCM Hub can create. That's, these technical limitations are a limitation of the copper on the pole to an extent, they're a limitation of money that they're choosing to spend on stock buybacks or whatever. They're not, maybe they don't choose to upgrade the infrastructure when they could spend it on other things. If you look at your cable bill, this franchise fee, these dollars that fund all of this is a very small percentage of your bill, and it's money well spent. There, you know, some of these things in this capital plan are things in my buildings, and I can see day to day how much of a difference they would make. The ability for them to just walk in, plug into our network, and be broadcasting from outside any of those buildings is a huge advantage for the community. The parade during Yankee Homecoming, they hook up to the high school's connection, which they have a fiber internet connection that they use to stream that content back to the station and then over the cable. Yeah, this is all money well spent, and honestly, like I said, if you, people pay for cable boxes rental that isn't hooked up to a TV, and it costs more than how much of your bill is paying for all this. So, thank you for letting me speak. I'm not much of a speech guy, I'm the IT guy, but I appreciate it.[1451.53][1451.53][applause]
I am a city councillor. My name is Ben Harmon, 298 High Street. Thank you to all of you for showing up tonight. Thank you to the representative from Comcast, I'm imagining you've probably heard worse. But as a member of the city council, and shout out to many faces from Ward Four who are here tonight, thank you again for being here. I just want to speak briefly about the importance of community access to public meetings, as has been said, as well as local access to local coverage of events. That is, you know, something that is diminishing in other communities, and I think we should hold fast to our, what we do have, and I think the NCM Hub provides a great service to the community in that way. So, but beyond official meetings, which Jean spoke eloquently about, having documentation, having reference material, I also don't want to diminish the value of a high school game getting broadcast for a parent who can't get away, or somebody who is sick, or has a disability, and the cultural aspects. I gave a little speech at the Pride Flag Raising, and you can find it on NCM Hub if you missed it. And I think that those types of events and that type of engagement in a community with so much rich activity like Newport, being able to document and preserve that is really important, so that people who can't show up, because we do have so many great things to do, don't have to miss out on being able to participate in some way and seeing those recordings. Lastly, to fellow Ward Four resident and finance director Ethan Manning, and as a member of the Budget and Finance Committee, I can tell you that those numbers maybe seem small in the grand scheme of Newport's budget, but cities and towns are facing the decline of pandemic-era funding, uncertainty in terms of what's going to happen in Washington, and certainly with the economy in general. And so these are tough days for us to find those dollars to continue to invest in that infrastructure, and if we don't, if we don't invest in it, it will decay, it will fall apart. I mean, these technologies are not built to last forever. And to the earlier gentleman's point, there are new technologies, this will become easier, this should become more, you know, crowdsourced and available for people to contribute content, but we won't be able to take advantage of that if we aren't on the latest technology. So it's not free, and we don't have a pile of money that we're sitting on, and so it is essential that we maintain our relationship with Comcast in order to make sure that we can make those investments. Thank you.[1629.45][1629.45][applause]
While you're deciding if you still want to come speak, which there is still time to do so, there's a great letter that we got that will enter into the record, but I just wanted to share it because I really appreciated reading it. It's from someone who's extremely active in the community and just couldn't make it tonight. This is from Paula Esti at the PEG Center for Art and Activism. So she said, "I've had so many positive experiences at Port Media. It's a small nonprofit whose mission is to creatively motivate positive social change in our communities. We depend on our cable station to provide us with a community access essential to our mission, the missions of so many other local nonprofits that have been featured on your cable stations. This kind of public access and exposure is essential in imagining, creating, and growing a more diverse and equitable environment. Port Media is essential. I've visited with Mary on the morning show, she got a shout-out earlier, many times to talk in depth about our offerings and our mission. Race Matters with Ed Carson was a fabulous learning and growing experience, both as a guest and listener. Port Media has on numerous occasions filmed our educational forums, flag raisings, and events, including an important program with Ed Carson that kicked off our four-part series called Being Black and White Spaces. Thank you for continuing to support this valuable community asset for intergenerational growth and community wellness." Paula Esti, Executive Director, PEG Center for Art and Activism. Going to take a look at the Zoom screen and see if there's anyone who wanted to weigh in. Okay, we seem all right at this time. Is there anyone else who wanted to share anything this evening? So I wanted to let everyone here know that written comments and letters are welcome to be submitted, and we'll be sure to pass those along. Those can go to either by email, you can send them to mayor@newportna.gov. I can also have my card here, and I'm happy to distribute that to anyone who wants to follow up this evening. The city reserves the right to hold an additional hearing or hearing if needed or otherwise helpful to the license renewal, and, you know, we'll be listening for anyone who has more comments about anything going on. But any other thoughts from anyone else? All right, well, at this point, I feel comfortable with closing the public hearing. Thank you all for being here this evening, and we really appreciate all that you had to say. So thank you so much.[1796.63][1796.63][applause][1797.63]